Hello?
Now, now, it is on. Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's right. Good morning, everyone. This is the Town of Montreat Planning and Zoning Commission, and we're coming to order for our regular quarterly meeting, the first one of the year, so it's exciting to be starting again. I think that's exciting. Let's have a moment of silence to begin. Amen. Would someone like to move to adopt the agenda after the motion is made before we vote on it? I have an amendment.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second if I, Bill. I'd like to move that we amend under Roman numeral two to add, extend the oath of office to Julie, and that will be by Angie, and if there's a motion, a second to do that.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All voting on the amendment, say aye. All opposed. All voting on the motion as amended, say aye. All opposed, the motion passes.
So, Daniel and Sally, I just want to let you guys know, don't vote, because we have all the board members except for the ETJ seat here, and that one will just be vacant if he's not here. You guys can participate in discussion, but just don't vote.
Okay.
Sorry.
So even though we're missing one, neither one of them acts.
No, because it's ETJ seat, and they're regular town members, or alternate town members. We don't have an alternate ETJ.
Okay, great. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the October 19th.
Next thing on the agenda, because it's amended.
You already voted on that.
Right, but now we get Julie.
Oh, oh, no. Angie.
Now we get Angie.
You get old like me, forget everything, and you just do it. Angie, would you come up and extend the oath of office to Julie? Hello, Chair.
I'm out of my element, some little off-kilter. I was going to say, you're.
You're halfway.
Sorry, Bill.
Do you, Julie Shell, swear or affirm that you will well and truly execute the duties of regular membership of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Montreat according to the best of your knowledge and abilities so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Welcome back, Julie. Yay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's for a 15-year term, is that right?
That's right. That's right.
Okay, next, I believe now we're down to Roman numeral four.
Three.
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 The minutes.
Oh, the minutes, oh, yes. And is there a motion to adopt the October 19th meeting?
I would like to make a motion that we need to.
Just get a motion on four. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Now, are there any amendments to the?
Who made the original motion?
Somebody over here. Daniel, no, Daniel couldn't vote.
No, they can't make motions.
John did.
John, okay. So John made the original motion to adopt, and then who was our secretary?
A second.
Dan seconded. Okay, and then Liz, you made the motion to amend?
Yes. I would like to make the motion to amend the minutes from the October 19th, 2023 meeting on page two. At the top of the page, Allen Crawford volunteered to serve on the vacant position and was appointed to the Hillside Development Subcommittee.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion to amend passes. Now, is there a motion to adopt the meeting minutes as amended?
I move that we adopt the meeting minutes on October 19th as amended.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion passes. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is organization and planning, election of officers. I would just like to say, if anyone wants to do this, they can certainly do this.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
With extreme gratitude for your past service and recognition of your outstanding leadership, as well as the Vice Chair and the Secretary, I would like to move that we reelect Bill Shire as Chair, John Hinkle as Vice Chair, Angie Murphy as Secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission for 2024, and I'd even add that we've, I move that we double your salary. Delete the last part.
Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that motion?
I.
That's the doubling of the salary. No, that's the motion. Are there any other nominations? See, none of you ready to vote on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you for your confidence.
Thank you.
It's been, it's been fun to work with everybody. It's really a busy job, if you can imagine, so I'm shocked that he got in.
You just have to put up with a lot of phone calls.
It's nice to have, that's right, it's nice to have Kayla, does a great job, Angie helps so much, so it's, it's great, so thank you. Okay, Roman numeral five, Subcommittee Updates. First of all, I'd asked Kayla if she had a list of the members of the various committees, because Liz and I were talking, we couldn't remember on Hillside, who had been and who had not been appointed.
Yeah, so, and I'll send this out to y'all later. The printer was broken, so I was told not to touch it, so that's why I didn't have printed copies for y'all, but right now, and please correct me if any of this is wrong, on Hillside Development, we have a vacant chair, we have Liz as the secretary, Bill and Allen are on there, and then, and Allen was appointed at the last meeting. Sign Subcommittee, Sign Ordinance Subcommittee, John is the chair, Dan is on it, and I believe Julie is on it as well, and who is the secretary? Julie?
John. Move you double that salary.
All right, and then the Zoning Ordinance Subcommittee, which is the only other Subcommittee that I know of, has Dan as chair and Julie, and who else is on it?
Africa.
Are you on it? Okay. And do you, do y'all know who the secretary is? You guys haven't met in a really long time, so, okay. All right. Okay, so that, that's what I have, as far as who's, who's on it.
Any corrections or any additions? Okay.
The only, only thing, is I recall, and I was trying to find my list of.
I don't think your mic is on.
Is it on?
No, it's off.
Hello?
There we go.
I don't have the list, but one of the committees, and I think it was the, the research Subcommittee I wanted, was, I think Mason Blake was on it as a liaison with the town. I think it's on that list that you handed out and typed up.
We talked about.
Did somebody have?
I have a list from seven fourteen twenty-two on Zoning Ordinance Amendments Committee.
Yes.
Okay. I have Dan as chair, Allen Crawford, Mason Blake as Montreat Board of Commissioners member, John Hinkle and Julie Shell.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the list I was going by. I had a copy of it somewhere I was looking for, I can't find it all of a sudden.
Yeah, that was before my tenure, so, okay, so we have on the Zoning Ordinance Subcommittee, Dan as chair, Julie, Allen, John, and Mason.
That's what.
Correct.
I'm relying on that list that I've seen before.
Is everybody still, and everyone who's here still interested in being on it? Bill?
I'm not on it.
Okay. Do you want to be on it? You want to be on it?
I can always come on.
He can be an ex officia.
Sure. And you know, with all the subcommittees, I always let all y'all know when we have meetings, so if you want to come, you're more than welcome to come and participate. Okay, so, do you want to?
Any, does anybody want to report anything on the Hillside Development?
I think, do we need to?
Do we appoint a chair, or does the committee?
I think we'll just, we'll wait till the Subcommittee meeting, but, okay. We do need to pick a date. Well, Allen's, Allen's not here. I'll email y'all, and when I was listening to the recording from October, I think I had said in it that I was going to check back in with everybody in January, so I'll send an email to the three of you today with some dates, and then we'll get that together, and I know Liz, you found that having the set meeting schedule was really helpful, that we had done it last year, so we can do that again at our first, at our first meeting.
Okay.
So I'll send an email to y'all about that later today.
Anything from the Sign Ordinance Committee?
Yeah, we are scheduled to have our next meeting on February the eighth at 10:30. Angie, you'll be sending that out to the public?
When you're capable, whatever.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
And did you guys, you guys got what I sent, right? And that all, that looked?
I haven't had a chance to really review it and look at the pass notes and so forth.
If it, if it doesn't look right, let me know, because I know that we had some confusion of what had, what y'all had done already, and then, you know, what we still had to do. I think I've got what we still have to do.
I think you got that captured.
I just want to make sure we have the right document of what y'all had already done.
Thank you.
And if you guys need any of that material printed, just let me know. Did, for sign, yeah, I can. Do you guys want to meet in this room or the conference room?
I think the small rooms.
Should be fine. Small room should be fine.
I like the conference room.
Let's have a big crowd.
As we have a whole crowd.
I mean, who doesn't want to be here talking about signs? Okay.
Okay, does any Ordinance Amendments Committee, anything?
The only thing I need to add is, we're still in the holding pattern, y'all have heard that enough now, I don't have to repeat all of that until the lawsuit is resolved. At the last meeting, I think it was Liz that asked, maybe if I could furnish a list of the items that we will consider at some future date, and after pulling all the scraps of paper and bags of envelopes where I had notes where people suggested things, and in meetings we'd discuss things, I have prepared a very tentative, rough, starting point, which I'll give to everybody, can do it now or as we leave the meeting. Obviously, we're not going to do anything with it for some time, we're not sure when, hopefully sooner rather than later now, but it's just a very tentative list of the items that have been suggested to me or have come up at meetings, and what I would ask you to do is, of course, to look at it, just be considered, but importantly, if you think of anything else between now and when we do meet, if you just get in touch with me, I'll add it to that list, and at some point, Kayla and I can get together and kind of put some background material together for when we do meet.
My wife wanted me to give you other things to consider, and that signs by vacation homes by owner, considering the anniversary. You don't need to decide anything else, she only does twenty long.
Are you talking about short-term rentals?
Yeah, is that what STRs, that's what I was thinking about. Short-term rentals, that's what you're talking about, yeah. It's not on my list now, yes.
So if you would consider placing.
And Dan, can you send me a digital copy of that, too, just so I have it?
Sure.
Thank you. And I'll put it in a sales spreadsheet.
Yeah, I've got a copy here for everybody. That's around now, or later, I've got a copy here, but.
Anything else?
That's all I have for that Subcommittee.
Anything for any of the other subcommittees as we proceed?
And there's no pride of authorship in that list, it's just what I quickly pulled together, I've not done extensive background research, I tried to cite some of them, if I knew an ordinance or a statute or part of the zoning ordinance, I cited, but I'm sure there'll be a lot more we'll need to pull together as we get into the details down the road.
Great, well, thank y'all. Thank each of the chairs, because it's important to stay organized, y'all have done a pretty good job. We haven't had a whole lot to do, not like two years ago, but it's been, y'all have been very helpful in keeping things moving forward. The next item is old business, the comprehensive plan implementation. Kayla, are you going to tell us something about this?
Yeah, so I think that, how many notes from last time, but I think that we wanted to check in on this, and, you know, if y'all will remember from our last meeting, we took all of the objectives and put them, put implementation generally where they should go, and then we had, some of them were assigned to the full Planning and Zoning Commission for review, some of them were assigned to a Planning and Zoning Subcommittee or Subcommittee, and some just went somewhere else. And so we had talked about at our January meeting, looking at the ones that were assigned to the full Planning and Zoning Commission for review, and maybe have, getting an idea together of how we'd want to pursue them. And part of that will be this Viewshed Regulation Presentation, so we can skip that one in our discussion and come back to it after that presentation, which is our next item, so I guess if we, that I believe was the intent. Yeah, absolutely. So on the first page is Vision Statement Environment, so Montreat will value and protect its tree canopy, streams, land, and natural beauty. It looks like we had four objectives under here that were assigned, one, two, five, yep, we had, thank you whoever just said that, we had five that were assigned to the full Planning and Zoning Commission to review, number four, number six, number nine, ten, and twelve. So I guess if somebody wants to start us off, I will say that I really liked what Julie has done, is kind of. has done, is kind of pick one that she's really interested in, she reached out to me, I put together some background information, we developed a PowerPoint, and then I made a recommendation of how we can move forward with that item and just show that we've made progress. Because ultimately, a lot of this is going to be up to the Board of Commissioners, but at least if we can show that we are recommending some action, and then saying, if they don't want to take the action, we'll revisit it, then we're making progress. So I guess out of those five, is there a starting place to talk about? Does somebody feel particularly passionate about one of those objectives? Your thoughts?
Some of these, just looking at, are of medium priority.
That's true.
Both long-term timeframe and medium, I'm looking at number four, for example. How do we, how do you recommend that we discuss this?
Maybe we start with the short-term ones.
Okay.
I don't see any assigned to Planning and Zoning that are high priority. So maybe we go with timeframe instead, so the short-term. Number six, number 10, and number 12. And number 10, we'll talk about that one next, so it would just be six and, six and 12.
So there, on, on these three pages, I guess there are five items that I, let me see, is that right? One, two, five items that I circled as being short-term and timeframe, high in priority, and falling to P and Z to deal with. Is that incorrect or correct?
Yeah, but some of them we assign to one of the subcommittees. So we don't need to talk about that at the full level, yeah. So I think for environment, if we look at number six and number 12 as a starting point, just based on timeframe?
We, we need to get the information about these two. For example, on number six, explore conservation easements. How do you recommend we do that?
Like I said, I really like Julie's approach of somebody kind of spearheading it and working with me. It's, you know, it's very, I can go any way with this, you know, it's, these are very large, general topics. So I think having somebody who's interested in whatever that objective is, serving as a point person to work with me, to put stuff together, I think would be my suggested format.
And to be clear, this relates to specifically property that resides within the town limits of Montrit, because there are already conservation easements in place for the roughly 2,500-acre Montrit Wilderness that's owned by MRA, and the roughly 200-acre Rocky Knob property that's owned by the Montrit cottagers, so this is...
This is the planning, this is the planning and development jurisdiction of Montrit, so that includes the town and the ETJ.
You know, maybe I'm a little bit confused in that, I think, or I'm just not sure where we are, I'm trying to focus, when we, we, these were listed by the comprehensive plan, this is obviously very broad, just taking that number six as an example, all of them are. And I guess I'm trying to decide how we're, just using this as an example, this conservation easement is something, it's ongoing, I think, because I know the cottagers, the MRA is something they encourage and talk about all the time, of putting land in conservation easements, they've done a lot in the past with lots that have been purchased by individuals, some by the Conference Center, and they've placed them in these conservation easements, so it's kind of an ongoing thing. And this just says explore it, I mean, it's like we're supposed to go back to square one, start all over again, it's an ongoing thing, it's been going on for years.
I think we just need to know where we are, is that what you're saying?
No, so, so what I'm saying is, this was identified in the comp plan as, as a priority to pursue. When we met back in October, this objective was assigned to the Full Planning and Zoning Commission to explore, examine, investigate, whatever. You know, it is very broad, there's work already being done under this objective, and so, again, going back to what Julie's done, is having one person work directly with me to kind of develop a pathway, put things together, and then we'll come back to the full board, just like what we do with sub, with subcommittees. Come back to the full board and say, okay, this is what we've put together, what are your thoughts? Because I think, you know, again, these are really broad, and we can sit here forever and just spin our wheels on them. So I think having a point person for the objective, and having that person kind of continue to carry it...
And present information about it.
Okay, yeah.
So like Julie did.
Exactly. So I think, and, because you're right, I mean, it is, it's incredibly broad, so where do we go from here? And the, you know, nine of us sitting here, we, we can spin our wheels. So I think having one person as the starting point, the point person, and I think it, in my, in my opinion, it should be something that you're interested in, you know, because you're going to learn a lot about the topic.
I, I think, I agree with you too, and I think probably educating us on what is conservation, what's easement and all that, and Bill, I think...
Yeah, so I'm already, I've been actively involved with the cottagers and working with the Rocky Knob property that is in conservation easement, I'm also on the MRA Wilderness Committee that is the steward for the Montrit Wilderness, so I'm happy to be point person on that.
And Liz, to your point about education, that was something that Julie and I talked about, so that's part of the Viewshed, you know, presentation, but again, what kind of education? And so that's what I would prefer to work with, one point person, and then we'll bring it to the board, that way it's, you know, it's like you each have your own little project to work on.
Sounds good.
And, you know, so, okay.
Okay, so that would, we could expect at least a report, not maybe a complete report, but at least a status report in the April meeting.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, Bill, we'll get together and talk about, you know, what does this mean, what, what does the board need to know, where do you think we should go with this? And then we'll just kind of come back and, and just kind of keep moving forward on this. The other short-term one that was assigned to Planning and Zoning is implementing the goals and recommendations in the Buncombe and Madison County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Let's go back before you do that.
Yes.
Number 10 is Julie.
Yes, number, yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm just going to write that down, so we, I'll have it there. Then number 12 is the, the Buncombe and Madison Counties' recommendations concerning hazard mitigation. Maybe you'd explain what that is?
Yeah, it's a Hazard Mitigation Plan, so all that is, is addressing, so the, the Hazard Mitigation Plan has different parts, part of it is examining what hazards the region is vulnerable to, how that can change over time, and then there are certain goals and recommendations for specifically the town of Montrit, of how to address those hazards.
And those are in the Buncombe and Madison County Regional Hazardous...
They're, they're typically done at the county or the regional level, and then they'll mention their specific jurisdictions.
This is just for information, or is it...
Um, yeah, I mean, I mean, I don't know. I think examining what's in there, and understanding that, and seeing what we're doing now that already supports it, and looking at the other things that we could be doing. So is there someone who's interested in hazard, I'd say probably hazard mitigation?
Could we encourage the alternate members to participate?
Absolutely.
So y'all feel free to volunteer.
Yeah?
So would anyone like to do number 12?
Sally.
Sally, okay.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll reach out to each of you to set up a time for us to talk. Just, you know, keep in mind, this is a lot, on top of my already day-to-day stuff, so just some grace in how quickly we move through this is much appreciated. Okay, so that's Alan Crawford. Yeah. Okay, so, those are the only short-term objectives that were assigned to Planning and Zoning, I think that's a good place to start for now. And then once we make progress on these, we can go ahead and look at the long-term, and I'll make a note of that.
And then you want to do the same thing on Development and Transportation?
Yeah.
Okay, under Development, then, we have number two, these are the short-term ones again, that's on just fully, and number five. Would anyone like to take either of those? Two is implementing a maximum lot coverage standard?
No, uh, I'm not, I'm not looking, I'm not looking for another job, I assure you, but I noticed under our, you can look at my list I just gave you, I thought the, it was assigned to our committee, Subcommittee, to review, evaluate, and improve the table of use as well as the density and dimensional regulations for each zoning district, wouldn't that kind of tie in with what...
That feels like it should be under that Subcommittee.
Wouldn't that kind of tie in with this one?
So look, can we change this to say that that's assigned to zoning ordinance?
Sorry, Dan.
Well, what was already assigned to us, it seems to incorporate this.
Yeah.
If we're talking about potential requirements and so forth, it seems it includes density and dimensional regulations, that would include...
That would include lot coverage.
I think we'll be discussing it, is my point. It may not be on the short-term timeframe, but if you see what I mean.
But it'll be your timeframe, right?
And we can always, Dan, when we do end up meeting, we can move it up higher in the list, just given that we know it's a higher priority.
And that short-term refers to what the comp plan people said about it, not what we said.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's right.
Um, yes.
Aspirational.
Aspiration.
That's number two.
Two, two under Development.
Bill, do you want to take number five? This is about short-term rentals.
I'll, I'll do that.
Now, I will say, I know that, you know, Bill, you did ask Dan to put that on his list, but I do think there's an examination that we can do ahead of time.
I agree, don't, yeah, we won't let Dan pull it yet, but I'll do the preliminary. Right.
Okay. Right.
Okay, so that's all under Development. Under Transportation...
None.
We don't have any, right, none.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, like, why are we not looking at number four? Is it already under a Subcommittee?
Are you talking about under Development?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I looked at it.
Yeah, all the way on the right-hand side.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else on this? Is that, so, let's, let's have some, let's agree among ourselves, so we'll at least have some preliminary reports. Number one, the person we'll get with Kayla, that's the next meeting, which is in April.
The only thing I would say is that these are big topics, and so I think it would be helpful to maybe have, maybe make a decision about what we want to see at the April meeting, because I don't want to throw conservation easements, hazard mitigation, and short-term rentals at you in one meeting. This is going to be really long, it's going to be a lot of information, and I don't think it's going to be helpful. So it would, my recommendation would be, just like we're doing Viewshed today, we, at the April meeting, we have a check-in about the comp plan, you know, I'm sure that, you know, I'll get with each of you who have taken a topic on, and we'll start working on some stuff. People can give a little bit of an update, and then we can have some sort of presentation, review of one of these topics. So I guess my question, that would be my recommendation, what is, how does that sound to everybody?
Just like this?
Just like this, exactly. And we'll just keep kind of behind-the-scenes working, but what we bring to the full commission would be just focus on one topic. So I guess my question would be, conservation easements, hazard mitigation, or short-term rentals, in April, what would you guys want to see first? They're all short-term, medium, oh, well, short-term rental's high priority, so I don't know, we want to push that to April?
Which one? Sure, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. So we'll look for that in April, and then in April...
Gosh, you really pushed my wife.
She's what happens when she makes suggestions.
You know what the two most important words are in the English language?
I agree.
Yes, dear.
Yes, dear. When Peggy speaks, everybody listens. When Peggy speaks, everyone listens.
That's right, yeah, right.
So I'll...
She doesn't think I do.
I'll reach out to each of you who have taken one of these on, as well as the Hillside Development Subcommittee, to just schedule some conversations, but we'll shoot for short-term rentals in April, and then I think at that time, we'll have a better idea of where we are with hazard mitigation, conservation easements, and Viewshed, and then we can decide what we want to hear at the next meeting. Does that sound like a plan?
That sounds great.
Yeah, okay.
So as an example, on the short-term rentals, would we also include what Buncombe and Madison and others are doing as a way of discussing?
I, just as a side note, I work, I, short-term rentals are my project with Land of Sky, so I already have materials ready, an overview of what other communities are doing, school of government reviews, so, yeah, we'll look at, similar to what you'll see with the Viewshed, I think what we'll look at is kind of an overview, but we can talk more about that later.
I've sent my wife to see you.
Okay. All right, any other thoughts on this, on the comp plan implementation, before we move on?
Yes.
Yes.
When I, when this comprehensive plan initially came out, and I heard about it, I was very excited because there was talk of having a traffic study, when, you know, I'd be the first to admit, that's close to my heart, because my, you know, I live right, you can see it from here, right above the parking lot, I've spoken in front of town council half a dozen times about speed, noise, parking, and I've not made really any kind of headway. So when I heard that they wanted to do a traffic study, I was like, yay, finally we're going to get some kind of momentum going with this. Now, the latest I heard was that in December, town council was presented with an opportunity to get grant money, December of '22. The council was presented with an opportunity to get grant money to do a traffic study. The grant money would have been about $20,000, and Montrit would have had to kick in five, so we would have had $25,000. Well, council, that, number one, they had a short window, it was like December 8th, and it was due, the, the grant was due the 19th, so they voted it, no, we're not going to pursue this. So as far as I know, the whole thing is kind of just, you know, almost dead in the water, I guess. And I've always felt that, on this committee, that it's kind of, you know, we've been tasked and asked to do things, and yet, you know, we're a town with one way in and one way out, and we're made up of three different entities. I also heard that part of MRA's problem with their court case is that they were told that they did not have a traffic study. And so, you know, it seems like they would want to have some kind, or, or they're going to be pressed into having some kind of traffic study done. And I'm interested in trying to see that momentum continue, you know, through whatever means, and personally, I believe that the three entities that make up the town, well, the town, the college, and the MRA ought to pay for it. All three of them should pay for it, because anything that comes in on our one road, you know, anything that the, the college needs is accessed by Assembly and every, you know, everybody, you've got to go on Assembly to get anywhere. So, you know, th- those are just my thoughts, I don't want to see that fall by the wayside, and I do believe that it has always, I think it hampers our committee, and I think it hampers several other committees in their long-range planning to not have a traffic study, so.
Would it be appropriate for us, if we agree, to send a note to the town council?
That's what I was just going to suggest.
To say, we really think this is important, we would encourage you all to include...
To send it probably to Savannah, to, I think that needs to go somewhere, up.
I have a question about it.
Let them do what they want to do with it.
Yeah, um, yeah, maybe directly to, to the mayor, or our wonderful attendee, Commissioner Alexander. Certainly, I think, you know, the, the emphasis on, you know, the importance of this objective, and then also maybe the, the suggestion of some sort of partnership.
Will you and Sally work on a draft of that? And I don't think the draft needs to come back to us, because I hate to wait till April to do that. So would you all do that, and then just circulate it to us, if you guys got any comments? Send back to Kayla, and we can get that on to them, so they could have it for their February meeting.
Jane's want to say something.
Why not?
Jane wants to say something.
Oh, I didn't know she wants to say anything. Welcome.
Thank you, all, all are welcome. One of the reasons that at that time, there was all that traffic study, it was for that mile stretch, and when we think about a traffic study, we all see, oh, you know, they're just a set, and they're $5,000 for a mile, and, you know, what are they going to do with it? What are they going to see that we even have an option to change? They came up and addressed that a little bit more, but that was the reason that, and you know how projects, when you hire a consultant, or you get someone to come in that you pay, you start with there, and then it's one, it's almost an extra add.
And I think at the time, we didn't have additional funding from the other entities. So I think, I will say that, like, I, when I'm not here, I don't do traffic studies, but I do small-scale planning, things like that, and I will tell you, it is very expensive. There, these are professionals who have advanced degrees, certifications, licenses, it is very expensive, it is more expensive than you would think. And I think that Kent, Commissioner Otto, had made the suggestion, is there something we could do internally instead? And I will say, that's not something I can do. I don't know if there's a traffic engineer or planner living in the town that would be willing to lend their services, but certainly, that, I think, what Jane shared is, was the main concern, is why is it so expensive? And so I don't know if maybe an option in the future would be to partner with the other entities to expand the study, even if it costed more. I think that's certainly something to look at. Liz?
Sally, thank you. That was really good. Thank you for bringing that up and explaining, Jane. I wondered, you know, we have this short-term, the support and implement, the goals and recommendations for the hazard mitigation. I mean, traffic's important, you know, if we had something happen in Montrie, and I wondered if somehow that sense of urgency or importance could be brought up in the communication with the town council.
I think that's a great point, Liz, and Sally's assigned to the hazard mitigation so much of that radar.
Yeah, that somehow, you know, it's something we need to understand for our community.
Are you suggesting we not send the recommendation?
No, no, I, I think it's wonderful. I'm just trying to tie it together to...
Yeah, she's trying to tie it to additional things, and I think that's a good observation. Yep.
So we, it, it seems to me that our recommendation would be that the town council reconsider its decision and work in concert with the other organizations to, to...
Yeah, so at the time, it was grant funding. That grant is not available anymore. I don't know if it will be available again at the end of the year, but, you know, certainly it's something that I'll keep on my radar, because it is actually offered out of the MPO, which is housed in Land of Sky. So I work with their staff, which is how I found out about the grant in the first place. So, yeah, I think certainly, I mean, budget comes up in, in June, so certainly putting that in front of them and asking for maybe this to be considered as, as part of that. Yeah, so I think maybe shooting for something before June, May, April, something like that.
And, and with the request that it be, be considered in their budget, that they consider working with the other organizations to...
Right, that, that's some more importance be, be placed on it, yeah.
Are you all comfortable with that, Sally?
Yeah, we can handle that, yeah.
One place you might look, as a mom of a graduate student that does research, is at local universities and graduate-level research projects, just an idea.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we clearly need to take into consideration the cost and understand that whether it's $25,000 or $50,000, either one, that's a lot of money for Montrie comprehensively, so. And we also, I think it's important that we upfront, kind of try to figure out as best we can, what we're trying to solve for by spending that money, because I think everybody's very aware of what the issues are, too many cars, too high speeds. So, you know, how much of the kind of proposed problem identification and solution can we just kind of craft or take a shot at without spending $25,000 or $50,000 would be important to evaluate, and also understand that there, you know, there's at least the opportunities for some tension between the entities that are going to be impacted by the traffic study. I just think of, you know, the college, potentially, and also, any traffic study is going to be, have shortcomings if it doesn't take into consideration where the college is headed in terms of its, you know, its development plans within our jurisdiction.
So I would push back a little bit on what can we do internally, because I will say that I think it's important to have an impartial third party who's making these recommendations and looping together those three entities, not as an employee of the town, not as a representative of the town, but somebody who is serving as that central communication point, who can be neutral.
So you mean consultant?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think MRA, under what they faced recently in their court decision, would be more aptible to accepting somebody who had a license, who was a professional, rather than getting a grad student from college, because I think they've already run up against that before. So they, if we can present to them that we are pursuing somebody who's qualified, they may be more receptive and have fun with this.
Yeah, and I think that the, the first thing is just going to be sending a memo saying, this is something we really believe is important, we would like action taken on it, especially with budget season coming up. Instruct us on, on, on what next steps would be, or how much the town could put towards this. Because they may say, well, we've got $2,000, and, and that's it, that's all we can put towards it. And then, you know, we've, we've got to work to get these other entities involved, yeah.
And, and also, I mean, I don't know what percent in the, I don't know how a traffic study would identify this, but an increasing proportion of the traffic over time is visitors. If you just look at what's happened in terms of hiking in Montrie, the internet and all trails and other apps have just made hiking options in Montrie incredibly visible, and people are coming here from all over, all over the country to hike, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's a way to track visitors, but I think certainly, times of year when traffic is, is heavier, and we know that, you know, residentially, the summer people are gone, you know, it's, it's winter, you know, so I think some of those observations will, will be important. But, yeah, certainly, Sally, you and I will, will work on that and, and see where we get, yeah.
And y'all will bring something, y'all, y'all prepare for sending it on our behalf, but we're discussing it anyway. Do you want to wait and have us consider it?
I would like to bring it back to y'all before we send it.
You've got plenty of time with your budget process. All right?
Thank you, Sarah. Kayla, would we be able to do that through email? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Now, you know, if we stood, lived up, maybe I may ask you to give the information, but we can't pass at that time that we won't have one, because we've been waiting for the report. Also, in this report, I'd love to think that, considering some of the litigation that they take with the traffic laws slows downsides more than, which is particularly, and can park them, or, or wear down that tour, so maybe see what's already working over there.
Shane, what, what report are you referring to?
I'm talking about, it's not a report, it's what, what the town has done.
Okay.
Slowed down sides, if you're a parker, you look down, and...
We, we can look at that, but it won't be by next meeting.
Oh, no.
No, it will not be by February.
No.
In April, for this.
No, you're not by then.
Yes, I was like, the, no.
No, we didn't expect that.
No, no, no. I, I worked for 12 hours yesterday, I'm going to bed early tonight. Yeah, certainly, Sally and I can, can dive into that, I think that's an important piece. Okay, anything else on this?
I think we're ready for Julie's, your presentation.
Okay, all right, Angie, can you bring up that Viewshed presentation?
What, now?
No, I, I was just asking Angie to bring the Viewshed presentation up. I can, yeah, I can direct you to where it is. So if you, when you're ready. All right, go back to one, planning and development. Okay, go to PZ, P and Z, so number two. Yep, agendas, 2024, and then today's date, and there should be second to the bottom. There you go. Now you guys get to see our file organization. Okay. All right, so I'll go ahead and run through this, and Julie, if you want to jump in. All right, so we're going to talk about Viewshed protection. As y'all know, this is Objective 10 under vision statement environment, to investigate implementing Viewshed protection regulations in Montrie. All right. So the first thing I want to do is give you a general definition for Viewshed. So you can see in this image, Viewshed can be affected by lots of different things, houses, trees, vegetation, topography, where you're standing, so it's all points visible from a single site of a fixed vantage point. There's a lot of different definitions, there are places that are regulating Viewsheds, I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute, but, and they all pretty much define Viewshed differently. So, but this is the most succinct, it's all points visible from a single site or a fixed vantage point.
And maybe this is premature, but as we think about it in the context of here, are we thinking about it from the standpoint of as we stand within kind of the development jurisdiction of...
That will be part of what the, if regula, I'll get to that.
Okay, great.
Yes, I will get to that. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so some of the impacts of Viewshed, it can maintain context for a site or community, it can reinforce the preeminence of symbols or institutions, it can define a resident and visitor experience in a community, and generally, it prioritizes natural and symbolic elements with a viewer's line of sight. So those are the things that Viewsheds do. Okay. All right, so threats, which may be a little bit of an extreme word, but potential impacts to Viewsheds, and this is specific on the location. So as we saw in the definition slide, what you're actually going to be able to see is based on where you're standing, and how much vegetation there is, is there a structure, topography, things like that. So some of the things that, again, being location-specific, can impact a Viewshed are vegetation clearing, so loss of vegetation and tree cover can change the way a place feels, the way a place looks, topographical changes, so from grading, that may actually change the Viewshed itself, so what, what you can see, what you can't see, structure development, both in mass and height, and this may be more impactful, depending on design. So depending on what choices are made to, in designing that structure, may have a bigger impact on the Viewshed than other choices.
And on vegetation clearing, I guess this really kind of, that implies kind of man, people-driven impacts on vegetation, but also, obviously, there's a significant issue as it relates to natural...
Yes, these, these are both natural and man-made, sure. That's a good point. Road construction, so a road may not necessarily be visible from a Viewshed, but removing vegetation and changing the topography may be. Same with things like utility lines, like you can see where the power lines just scrape the trees in these long lines. Large-scale signage, so billboards, can also impact Viewsheds. Next slide.
And I would also note, so one of the things that I found educational that I did not anticipate, and Kayla touched on this, is you need to think about it from two points. So in order to have an ordinance around it, you need to define, not just the view you want to protect, but the vantage point from which you're trying to protect it. So it's not about me having a view from my home protected, you know, everything that I can see. So this is really, this may be a key bit of information when we think about educating the community, because you, you can't regulate it from everywhere, you need to regulate it from that vantage point, as well as what you're trying to protect the view of.
Right, but I think you're implying, this is what I was kind of alluding to earlier, it's like, it's the vantage point when you're down amongst the town of Montrie, but it's also the vantage point when you're in the Montrie wilderness, up on top of the ridges, and you're looking down at the town of Montrie. And, I mean, to me at least, and the greatest example of that is the Ingalls Warehouse, which is visible, glaringly visible from the top of every ridge in the Swananoa Valley region.
So we'll talk about that, those pieces of what exactly is regulation, what does regulation look like, in, in a couple slides. So there's two examples on the screen, and I don't know if I sent you all the PowerPoint, but I've cited the, where you can actually read these regulations. So one is Castle Rock in Colorado, one's Castle Rock in Colorado, and the other, Santa Clara Valley in California. So each of these places has regulations in place to protect specific Viewsheds, so the view looking at Castle Rock, and the view looking down into Santa Clara Valley. Another example is the Alamo. That is my favorite example of a Viewshed. When you're standing at the Alamo, you should see nothing but what it looked like 200 years ago. And that Viewshed is part of the experience, it's part of the character, it's part of the significance of that structure, you know, those wide-open plains, craggy rocks, things like that. So that, that's another example. Okay. So in North Carolina, there's not a, a ton of places that are regulating Viewshed. I think there, I found Jackson County and Banner Elk are two jurisdictions that actually cite Viewshed in their regulations. I think there is a lot that communities do that inadvertently impacts their Viewsheds, positively and negatively. But I will say, 160D 501B 9 says that comprehensive plans can address the protection of significant architectural, scenic, cultural, historical, or archaeological resources, and 160D 701 says zoning regulations can address public purposes, including promoting the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the community. So I think that both of those pieces of the statute provide justification to regulate Viewsheds, so I don't think we're totally crazy here for looking at, at this piece. Okay, so in Jackson County, the Viewshed focuses on a zoning district along US 441. This regulation limits vegetation removal and requires consideration for natural topography in development. And then Banner Elk focuses on properties that are visible from highways 184 and 194, and that also limits vegetation removal and requires a landscape plan for new development. So both of those, you can see there's a specific location that they're either looking at or trying to regulate the Viewshed from, and then they cite how they're regulating it. So in this case, vegetation, topography. So in this case, vegetation, topography. The other one that y'all might be aware of that I didn't put on here is the Ridgeline Protection Act. And that is, I don't, wouldn't apply here, but it's, I think, for everything over 3,000 feet in elevation, you can't build structures of a certain height. And the reason that that came into place was the Sugar Mountain Ski Resort, which I can see all the way from Marion. It's awful. It is my favorite thing to point out to people. It's right there, yeah. Ski sugar. So that doesn't necessarily apply here because we can't develop on our ridges because they're in the conservation easement. But there is, you know, higher-level regulations that do consider Viewshed. Okay, next slide, please. All right, so in Montreat, some of the things that Montreat already has that protect Viewshed, and again, this, the extent of Viewshed protection is going to depend on where you're looking at it from. So what your fixed vantage point is going to be. So building height limits, setbacks, sign regulations, the RPO, Ridgeline Protection, and Conservation District overlay districts that limit development in those natural areas along the ridgelines, places like that. In my opinion, the hillside development ordinance may be the strongest tool that indirectly protects Viewsheds. It limits grading, structure height, LR, the light reflective value of structures, which is the paint color, and vegetation removal. So the impact of these, again, is going to depend on what your vantage point is. It's going to be different depending on what you're looking at, from where you're looking from, excuse me.
And the fact that construction cannot be over a certain height, and I know you said this, but to emphasize that, that there are some indirect protections because there's not going to be a five-story home built on a residential lot.
Right. Yeah, so building heights, setbacks as well, so it's not all massed together, things like that. Did I see a hand?
Let me ask you a question, Kayla. You may have mentioned, I think I heard you say it. I know in a previous P and Z that I served on a number of years ago, we submitted to Town Council a recommendation for a color palette of homes being built in Montreat. Is that, was that implemented at all by Town Council at that time?
We can't regulate, the only thing, so we can't regulate architectural design. Paint color falls under that. Hillside development regulates the light reflective value of paint. So you can't have a light reflective value of, I think it's higher than 30. So you can't have a stark white house in a hill, in a property that's subject to hillside development. So no, we can't regulate architectural controls.
So who determines that at times? Do they bring that to the building inspector to say, "I'm building this house, and here's the paint color"?
No, we don't look at paint color.
So they could paint it whatever color they want?
Unless they're in hills, unless they're in a lot that's subject to the hillside development ordinance.
Well, I'm taking a particular lookout. You can see across the valley, the house in Montreat up above Graybeard, the stark white. And it just sits there. It's like, so you can't regulate that?
So again, the only way we reg, the only way we are legally allowed to regulate it is through that LRV value on the hillside development, on property subject to hillside development ordinance. We can't have a blanket, this is the only colors you can paint your house. This is the only siding you can have. This is the only rail type. We can't regulate architectural controls. The only way we would be able to do that is if the property owner consents to it, or you're in a historic district. Those are the only two ways.
Explain to me that LRV and the hillside development. If you can't regulate color, how do you?
Regulating the light reflective value, we're not regulating the color. So if they, if they can have a, if they can pick a color that is within that LRV range, they, we're not saying you can only paint it gray, blue, or purple. We're saying if you're under this LRV value, you can paint it whatever you want.
So they have, do they have to get approval before they paint?
They have to send me, if they are subject to the hillside development ordinance, they have to send me their paint swatch, and it has to show me the LRV value. So, and that's, the hillside development ordinance went into effect in 2009. So anything built before that did not have that restriction on it.
I'm just curious, is, I'm not sure I understand why they can even regulate it in that situation, that LRV. Help me understand.
Well, my, my take on that is that it's not saying you are restricted to this color palette. What it's saying is you have to be below this amount.
Why?
Because, because, yeah, I know. Because you are subject to the hillside development ordinance. Your property is sloped, your property is more visible. The purpose of the hillside development ordinance, which, let me get it in front of me. It's not blanket across the whole town. It's because of a specific purpose.
I hear what you're saying. It just seems to me that if you can regulate the color then, because the lot is so steep and so visible, that gives you permission to regulate color. So why then couldn't you extend it to other?
I don't see why, if you had a, so let me just go back to hillside development for a second, and then I'll talk about where else this may apply. Hillside development regulations of this article shall establish guidelines for responsible land use addressing both aesthetics, the viewscape, slope stability, and slope stability, utilizing approved methods of erosion prevention and stormwater control. Montreat contains intensely varied topography within a relatively small area, involving significant regions that transition abruptly from gentle slope to steep gradient. These factors pose unique challenges for the location and installation of structures while preserving the natural aesthetic character of the town. It has been determined that measures must be taken to ensure the stability of our hillsides while permitting continued low-impact development. So, that being said, that purpose, that aesthetic, viewscape, natural aesthetic, the way that the regulations are addressing that purpose is by saying you have to be below this LRV. Now, I don't see why that couldn't be put across other structures. I don't know why it isn't, but I don't, I think that if you had a purpose in your zoning ordinance, for example, that addressed these pieces, I don't see why you couldn't use the same mechanism.
Yeah, it just, it just seems to me that if legally or whatever, we can do it on a steep lot, because it is a little bit more visible, I get that. Then, as John points out, I don't know of that lot over there with that stark white house that I see every time I look out my window or walk around the deck, and everybody on that side of town does. That's got to be as offensive, whether it's on a steep slope or not. And why, so why should we not be able to regulate that as well?
So again, I don't see why you couldn't. I don't see why you couldn't apply the LRV standard, because it's not, you're not saying you can only paint it these colors. They're saying because of the visibility, because of how that's impacting the community, you have to be below this LRV. I don't see why you couldn't do that to the rest of the properties. Yeah, yeah, no, we're, no, we would not require people to repaint their houses, yeah.
But, but moving forward, would this come under the Viewshed?
Well, and that's going to come to my next, my next piece. The, so you have to determine what is the Viewshed you're trying to protect. And it can't be from private property. So, you know, thinking about standing at Lake Susan facing Graybeard. I mean, it has to have a purpose. It has to have a significance. It can't be arbitrary. You know, Lake Susan is a really important piece of the community. It's, you know, that, that Viewshed, that, those trees, the mountainous terrain, the old brick buildings, you know, that potentially could be a Viewshed. So it's not blanket. It's not saying no matter where you look, you shouldn't be able to see anything. It's from a specific point for a specific purpose. And just to explain how a Viewshed is done, you basically put a map into the computer, pick your point, and then the computer will run an analysis and show you what's visible from that point. And that's what you would use to say, if you are in these regulation areas, if you're visible from this specific fixed vantage point, you're subject to additional regulations. And again, coming back to the purpose of why that point was chosen.
Where does a cell tower fit in this? I mean, it's there, but from an aesthetic standpoint, we've talked about this in this committee. The aesthetics are not there.
It's, that's... I have investigated it, and I have left the information with Savannah. I've left my information with Savannah as to where we go with that. This would not be for existing development. This would be for new development. Unless the town wanted to pursue amortization, which I would not recommend. Because then you're asking people who already have existing houses and things like that to essentially comply. So no, this, this would apply to all new development.
So, as we explore this as a committee, are we the ones that say this should be the vantage point? Help me understand.
So that, that comes, that comes to my next, my next piece. So, and I'll be just upfront with you guys, I do not have the capacity to do this. You guys would have to, and I have a suggestion for how to get around that, but I, this is not something that I can do, not in the 24 hours a week that I have with your community. So the first step would be to do public engagement, to determine the area of study and identify any threats and opportunities to Viewsheds. So what areas are people identifying as, number one, important? And, and important in the sense that the Viewshed is a part of that experience, or the history, or, you know, whatever. Again, we have to tie it to a purpose. It can't be arbitrary. I mean, it could be Assembly Drive, could be Assembly Drive. I mean, Liz, back to the trails, I mean, maybe? I don't really know, I don't know how that would work exactly, determining the Viewshed for that, but I think certainly if that's something that the community is like, this is really important to the history, this is important to our, the experience of recreation, I think certainly it can be looked into. But that's going to be the first step, is determining what areas, what are these fixed vantage points? Or, you know, like we saw with Jackson County and Banner Elk, what is the corridor, so to speak? You know, because they used a certain set of highways. So what is important that that Viewshed needs to be preserved? What are the areas? What are the locations? And again, and that would be public engagement, you know, maybe a community meeting, something like that. The next step would be to draft regulations that identify the purpose, the location, and then what are the regulations that we need to protect that Viewshed from future development? And then it would be to adopt and evaluate how the regulations are performing.
Maybe, just as this, an idea, there would be things in hillside development ordinance that might be helpful, like Dan said, that could just kind of be transferred over.
And I, and I think that that can be a part of it as well. But it's got to be, it has to be tied to a purpose. And like I said, I don't see why that LRV, if there was a concern about visibility of structures, why that couldn't be carried over. I could see a challenge if it was applied blanket, but I could see justification if it was tied to a Viewshed.
But pulling, pulling on that point, I mean, I think one of my key learnings out of this exercise is the actions that we take to modify other zoning ordinances. I think the community is telling us that they care about the views that we have, and they want to protect them. And so we should be considering that in our ordinances, updates, changes, that indirectly affect that. And the hillside ordinance is one of them, of course, the setbacks. I mean, it's clearly also setbacks, as well as building height. So it was just a reminder to me that thinking broadly about those activities is really important. But the other part is, I, I thought Viewshed Protections was going to wrap in a lot more of that, and it really doesn't, because of that need to have those two fixed points. So it is, you know, when we talk about going to the community and asking for input, which I am supportive of at the right point, I think it starts with informing the community on what Viewshed Protections will do for the community. Because I think we might collectively have a view that it will do more than it might actually be able to do.
Yeah, like impacting private property. And it, and it, it may indirectly, but it's, that's not the purpose. It's from specific, you know, points. And so I think, just Julie touching back on that, I think, you know, if there is a Viewshed that the community does feel is really important to protect, part of the examination will have to be, well, what are we doing? You know, what is in that Viewshed right now? What are the regulations that that Viewshed is subject to? What's already working? What's already there? And then, do we need anything else? And I don't, I don't know. So I guess, next slide, please. Okay, so next steps, I guess as a, as a commission, y'all need to determine how important it is to address this objective now in comparison to the other work that we're doing. I think it's okay to check back in and just say, you know, hey, do we feel like this has moved up? Are we hearing things in the community? Check back in after a certain period of time. If it's a high priority, recommend to the Board of Commissioners to take a specific action. The recommendation that I would suggest is that the Board Commissioners conduct public engagement to determine what Viewshed needs regulation and what the community concerns are. So as I said earlier, this is not something that I can do within my 24 hours a week. I am already maxed out, especially with these new pieces of comprehensive plan implementation. I will say that I do small-scale public engagement like this as part of my job outside of here. I just finished a short-term rental engagement plan with Weaverville. That was three sessions of public engagement over two months. And now I'm writing a report on, on what we found, and then the planning board, their planning board will take it and decide what they want to do with it. So, you know, certainly Land of Sky has capacity. There is another planner on staff who is fabulous, who I'm sure could, could run this public engagement. If y'all wanted to do it, certainly we could have commission members do it. It's really up to you guys. But I will say that the Land of Sky would, would not be free.
And I wanted to note, Bill, I know you want to make a comment. This is the first one out of the gate. So I'm a bit reticent, even though I, I worked with Kayla to investigate to suggest that we should immediately move forward with seeking funding to commission public engagement. You know, thinking about the conversation about traffic, a traffic study and the cost there. I'm a bit concerned that if we rush out with a recommendation to use funds for this, that the next two or three items that we will, you know, be investigating, that we would wish that we had reserved the request. So, so my recommendation is, subject to the feedback of this group, is, is to wait.
Check back in.
I definitely want to make sure that the Board of Commissioners knows that we are moving forward with considering the items that have been assigned to us. But in particular, because this is a medium priority, I would recommend that we make sure the Board of Commissioners knows about the investigation. We have some plans if they would choose to move forward, but our recommendation would be to defer for a period of time.
And I will say, Julie, I have asked for guidance on how the Board of Commissioners would like to see the progress with this, and I haven't gotten anything back, so I don't know. But I am tracking it for when they are ready to receive feedback, or to get like a progress update.
My question was to move us toward an action. And I thought you were headed to number one, but number two sounds better to me, that we recommend that the planning and zoning, we recommend to the council, Planning and Zoning Commission defer further action at this time and reconsider Viewshed protection in January. Is that what y'all are?
Do we want the check-in date January 2025?
Is that the right day?
I like that, because that gives us the next three medians to cover the three items that have been assigned. And then we could, you know, have a full view of the, of those and make a recommendation. And I think within one year fits a short-term timeframe.
Would someone like to make that motion as option two?
I just want to make one comment before we go any further. When you do, just, or when everybody decides that it's time to move ahead with that, could that information, the PowerPoint that we just went through, be put in the Montreat newsletter or something like that, you know, for three weeks in a row? You know, for people to look at what you just explained to us? Before you send out any kind of surveys and things like that? like that?
Yeah. If y'all were going to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to do some action, this presentation would be a part of that meeting. So I'd be giving that in public. And all that information would be available online as well. Yeah, no public engagement would be done until the Board of Commissioners okayed it. And then, you know, in January 2025, if we do want to move forward with this, you guys will have to decide as a commission whether this is something you guys want to do internally or if this is something you guys want to find somebody to do.
Sure. I was just going to say, I found this really helpful. So Kayla and Julie, thanks for this. I thought it was really well done, and it just prompted a lot of, you know, a lot of thinking on my part. But I think, again, it just reinforced what we all know, that Montreat is really an exceptional place, and we're fortunate to have a heritage that appreciates that the natural beauty and the viewscape, so to speak, is our greatest asset, and there's a culture of wanting to preserve it. And we're also uniquely blessed by the fact that we've got over 2,500 acres that are critical to our view shed, that are a permanent conservation easement. If you look at virtually any other mountain or lake community, they're just eyesores. Most of the development is in stark contrast to the natural beauty, and they're just little pockets of pretty places with, you know, ugly construction around them. But, you know, I think we do have to be cognizant that an increasing number of people who are moving to Montreat don't have that history of Montreat. And they may well come from one of these other mountain communities or lake communities and may not have an appropriate appreciation for just what this place is. I've been driving around in the last 24 hours, just kind of looking at Montreat, like little snapshots from everywhere I am, including on a hike, and just appreciating just how incredible the viewscape is here and how blessed we are. But I guess there's a role for regulation, which is what this is about, but it also seems like there's an important role for just education and just continuing to communicate to the community that this is really important. This is why you came here. We need to preserve it. I don't know anything about the White House, but I wonder if somebody had had a conversation with the people when they were early on in their process.
It was prior to 2009.
I will say that, like, from the town employee standpoint, there is only so much that I can do to dictate that piece as much as just being here for the last year and a half, year and however long, you know, I've come to appreciate those pieces as well. And I do think it's really, that is a really unique and important feature in Montreat. And, you know, it's, there is a limit to what I can do at staff level, unless it's written into the regulation. So.
Excellent. I just appreciate everybody's comments today. Thank you, guys. I just enjoy working with you and Kayla and Jane. My question is, just for clarification, in our April meeting, will there be another presentation from one of these other, okay?
That's kind of what I was thinking.
So we would be able to hear from everyone and have discussion by the end of the year? And I agree with you, Julie, that as much as we might want to hurry up, you know, slow and steady, focusing on education and communication is key.
Certainly. And, you know, as we move forward in these discussions of these items, if things do come up that feel like maybe we need to change our path forward, maybe we need to move something up and something else comes down, you know, just because this says medium priority or long-term, that's not static. Things may change. And so I think, I agree, I think like a conservative approach is a wise way to proceed forward. But yeah, certainly. We'll just, you know, keep checking in over the year. And, you know, like at each meeting, you know, we'll go through our little list here, just like we do our subcommittee check-ins. We'll do our comprehensive plan. I don't know, do we want to think of a fun title for those who have been assigned an objective? Our comprehensive plan captains? Comprehensive plan captain check-in? You know, so just like we do with the subcommittees, we'll keep checking in, we'll keep revisiting it, and if things change, things change.
I want to thank y'all, too. I didn't understand it as much without the verbal presentation as much.
It is complicated. It can be technical, but really it's what are we looking at and why is it important?
And what I would like to suggest is that, I was just looking at this again, I don't think you can send it out in exactly the same format. Like, I wouldn't put out what we're considering, that sort of thing.
If.
But we could send it out and say, this is something we're working on.
And again, you know, I'm just waiting for guidance on how the Board of Commissioners wants to get those updates.
Well, and I wonder, in order to not look like we're doing this piecemeal, because we're not, if we should frame this as we have considered four individual parts of the comp plan that have been assigned to us to take action, we have reviewed one, we are understanding and are recommending deferring further action as we continue on to numbers two, three, and four with consideration of all of them and a recommendation to be made in January of 2025.
Yeah, I mean, certainly. I think that's an important context. And I guess if anybody was concerned about the planning and zoning commission's process, I would encourage them to read the minutes or listen to the recording, because you all have referenced the hazard mitigation piece in regards to the traffic study, hillside development in regards to the, you know, I would encourage, and attend our meeting, you know? So I would encourage anyone who voiced any concerns to review the town's record, because you guys are not considering it piecemeal. So, but certainly.
So let me just see if we can bring it under five to 12.
Yeah, I need a, I'd like a motion on that. Okay, perfect.
Is there, we do option two, recommend planning and zoning commission for a project. Reconsider view shed protection in January 25, but that appropriate education is required to be supplied.
Yes, please. Are you making the motion?
I can't, but if somebody wants to make that motion.
Can I return?
Yes.
Okay. So I move that we recommend that the planning and zoning commission defer further action at this time and reconsider it in January 2025, but that appropriate information be supplied to the community in order to inform them on view side protections.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All voters say aye.
Aye.
Question carries. Thank y'all. That was good. Very helpful.
I would add, if anybody wants to see the White House that has been discussed here, drive up Lookout Road, turn right on Chapman Road, and pause just above the baseball field and look to your right. You can't miss it.
Which road is it on?
It's off of Gravy area. And there are probably 15 other houses surrounding it, and you just don't see them because they're all painted neutral earth tone colors, but this one just happens to be white. It just grabs you every time. It's the first thing you see when you look at.
If you want to see another one, if you go down 40, and you're going down the part of 40 that doesn't have any exits on it, going from Bungham County to McDowell County, there is one White House in the entire Green Valley. That one.
Only color in the palette that would stand out like that. Now, purple and orange wouldn't stand out like white does.
In order to move this along, the next thing on the agenda is the next meeting?
Adoption of 2024 meeting schedule.
What, yeah?
Under new business.
Right. Adoption of the schedule. And then I just wanted to.
Should be the last thing in your packets.
There's a schedule here. I will be out of town on the 18th. We'll be at Paul's Island.
Which 18th? The July or?
4/18.
4/18, okay.
So we can move that to 4/25, if that's okay with everybody else. We've changed Paul's Island, we've already sent in our money.
I unfortunately did not bring my calendar. I've got to look. There's one week in April I'm out of town.
Yeah, I can do that.
Confirm that.
And we can massage that as.
Well, and I will say that even if everybody can't be here, if we do have a quorum, we do need to hold the meeting. And it is really difficult to try to corral all y'all via email. So we'll move that, the next meeting then, to 4/25. Are there any other conflicts with July 18th or October 17th? Okay, there is, I'll let you guys do this, and then I have something to add.
Yeah, if y'all want to adopt the schedule.
I move that we adopt the schedule for the year for 4/25, 7/18, and 10/17 for our meetings.
All voters say aye.
Okay, can I?
Can I just add one thing? We're talking about the schedule. To adopt it, other than the third, second Thursday of those four months, is technically a violation of our rules of procedure, and you'll notice when you see our list of tentative topics, that was one of the things we're going to discuss, is the ability to change our regular schedule. It technically doesn't say that in our rules of procedure, and that's one of the things we'll be investigating at some point. I think we can still go and adopt it when it's early in the year, but I think we're fine. But just want to point out, that's one of the little things we'll be addressing in our subcommittee, just to make it so that there's no question we have that ability to do it. Even at a later date, with our, in the first year, I mean, if something came out in the middle of June, and we decided nobody can meet in October 17th, we should be able to change that. And that's one of the things we'll be addressing. Yeah, but yeah, proceed where we're going. We've got our eye on it, yeah.
Okay, next, there's a special meeting.
Yeah, so as Bill knows from my frantic phone calls, we have a, there's a text amendment to the Montreat general ordinance, to the stormwater ordinance, that was filed by a property owner. The general ordinance, the way that the state statute works, because there's no amendment procedure in the general ordinance, is that amendments to the general ordinance go to Board of Commissioners, and then if the Board of Commissioners wants to refer it to planning and zoning, they may, and then it goes back to Board of Commissioners for a final decision. So it's essentially adding in an extra step. This text amendment is going to go before the Board of Commissioners February 8th, and the property owner is looking to definitely move kind of quickly with this one. So I was hoping to schedule, get a special meeting, figure out a date in February that y'all can meet, just in case the Board of Commissioners refers it down to you, so that I can get this text amendment back to the Board of Commissioners in March.
So it would be after the 8th?
Yeah, so it would be, let's see, do, do, do. So it would be between, oh, wait, boop, boop, boop. Either the 14th, the 15th, or the 21st of February. Those are the only three dates that I can do.
The 14th and 15th are available, but I'll be in Jacksonville from the 17th to the 3rd of March. February, yeah.
February, yeah, so 14th, 15th, 21st of February.
I can't do the 15th. 15th is out for me. I can do the 14th and 21st.
That's Valentine's Day. I didn't want to forget that.
It would be during the morning.
We don't know if we have, as I understand it, we're not sure we're going to have to have a meeting.
I don't know, but.
It's only if the council wants to refer it to us. Is that what you're saying?
I think they will.
Really?
So what's going to be?
I don't know, and I'm really trying to support this property owner by getting this stuff lined up.
What would be involved with that?
It's a text amendment, so you guys.
There's not an ear, you would just consider it?
Well, it would be just like the other, it would be just like the other text amendment. I'll give you guys a presentation. The applicant will be there, probably the applicant's engineer, and you guys will go back and forth.
But it's not zoning ordinance?
No, it's the general ordinance.
Will you send us any information beforehand that we can?
Once the Board of Commissioners makes their decision. So general ordinance is a development ordinance. The state statute states that any development or any amendment to a development ordinance has to have a public hearing by the governing body, but that the governing body may refer the ordinance or the amendment to an advisory board before making a decision. So I don't know if they will. But like I said, it's really hard to pick a date via email, and that's why I wanted to do it while we're all here. Yeah. So it would be just, it's just essentially a text amendment.
Well, y'all, okay, scheduling that on the 14th? It doesn't mean we're necessarily doing it.
Yeah, I don't know, but I'm trying to get prepared.
14th to 21st, I'm fine.
If y'all want to go to the 21st, that's fine.
Does this relate to stormwater? The reason I'm asking these questions is, you know, we have kind of taken a position that we're not going to do text amendments as long as that lawsuit's pending, for fear we're interjecting ourselves into that lawsuit. And we're talking about a text amendment.
We can't tell a property owner they can't amend an ordinance. We don't have a moratorium on amendments to our development ordinances.
And we have done one minor one, of course. Okay. Just want y'all to keep that back in mind.
We would only have that one day to work on it? Oh, wow.
Mm-hmm.
12:00?
Mm-hmm. And I will say that typically, planning boards do it in one meeting. I've only had a few text amendments carry over into multiple meetings. I mean.
And if they came to us, does that mean that there would be no public hearing?
I mean, it's open to the public, but it's not really.
Required public hearing.
Yeah, it's not the required public hearing. It would be the Board of Commissioners saying, we want you guys to look at this before we approve it.
Would the 14th give you enough time to notify the public?
Yes. The public only gets notified a week in advance for your meetings. The public gets, for text amendments, we advertise in the Black Mountain newspaper for two weeks before the Board of Commissioners meeting. That 14th, 15th, and 21st date allows me enough time to advertise for the March Board of Commissioners meeting.
You've already covered all your bases.
I'm trying to do.
The 14th.
14th, 15th, y'all, I apologize for.
The 14th at 10:30?
More candy hearts.
And I will, yes, I will bring y'all candy.
Maybe, yeah, you could go ahead and send that out.
Special meeting. So you'll let us know after the 8th if we are needed on the 14th?
Yeah, I can, I can send you guys directly what has been sent to the Board of Commissioners because it's now, Angie, the ads are submitted, right? Or is it, when do they publish? Next week? Next week?
Or, what do you think?
What did I say? I don't even know what day it is.
It's already submitted to the paper.
And it runs next week. Okay, I can send it to you guys next week because that's when it becomes public information. Yes. So I will send it, I'll send you guys the packet and everything then. And there may be changes from the Board of Commissioners that make it into y'all's packets, but I won't know. Yeah.
It's a mystery.
It is a mystery for right now.
We now have, according to my agenda, a public comment, plus a public. No C, no public comment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I second.
Before we vote on that, I just want to thank y'all, y'all are a very participatory group. You're helpful. Angie, thank you for the new one-up here.
Thank you for your good leadership, Mr. Chairman.
Jane, thank you for coming.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of your adjournment, say aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Motion passes.
Okay. Mike, see you on the 14th.
Yes.
I didn't.
It was not planned.
Well, with the part of the view shed, the lab wrote that off as a fishing.
Yeah.
Put that out.